We've missed you.
What's up, everybody? This is E poker coaching study session. Today we're looking at the Bozki. And Danny won it again.
I was gonna say, is this the one which he won like before I went away?
This is another one.
Getting away with it. Alright, here's the first bullet. It lasts one hand. Enjoy.
Alright, okay.
Oh, whoa, whoa, whoa.
So at thirty big blinds. How aggressively are you playing open enders?
You doing that without the heart?
Wait, sorry, and what uh what position it's under?
I'm under the gun.
Okay, versus cutoff. And you checked, you check out a position.
Oh, actually, that's different. I think it's, I think this is fine. I think this is fine.
Yeah, okay, so you check out a position on a flop that's not amazing for your range.
Uh, I don't think it's fine. Oh, well, okay, just wrong size.
I went in between those.
Yeah, cuz you should, you should be check raising here a lot. Like, you can bet some of your range, you should check raise a lot.
Should you?
On a nine high flop out of position? Yeah, definitely. He has all the sense.
What's going on?
Looks like you opened GTO wizard through an external link.
What?
That's scaling right there.
So tilting.
But they plopped Louis again. What have I done?
I think if you're not using like the, are you using the native client on your, uh, are you using it through the browser?
A nap there at.
Yeah, me, I don't, yeah, I don't know.
So we check raise a lot with Danae. I thought we would do it more with hearts, or at least with one heart, but we don't have just one, the one heart one.
This is just, this is just before the check, no?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
That too.
I hate when it says me like that.
He bet small, he bet two, right? Yeah.
Ooh.
Alright, there you go. It's there.
Well, actually, hearts are the one that wanna check raise the least.
Yeah, he had diamonds.
Got it all just so locked up.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, hearts is too good, right? You want, you want to have, you want to have some strong draws in your cold and range, right?
Alright, let's move it along. We always spend too long on these early hands.
You don't get that.
You can see Jack ten is the one that wants to raise.
I'm gonna bust anyway, it's so.
Okay, so this, you raise, you raise back, do you call here?
Yeah, it's mandatory.
Uh, 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 it's not close, Louis. You don't put that many of your, you don't put that many of your chips in not to call.
We're like, you can just be up against ace nine or like, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, well.
Okay, it is close. You want the back door.
You need front door or back door. You need a heart or eight.
Well, you, uh, actually, this is a, you used the wrong raise size. He raised bigger, like, you needed to use eight point three.
Yeah.
Right, cuz then he's just like, the price is so good.
It's closer than I thought.
Oh, it's just not, he never uses that size, so.
Yeah, you just never check raises to that size there, so.
By the way, see it, it's close.
I mean, if it's, if it's close.
Call off to me here. But you guys, it seems to be very like. One sided, but I wanna have like a heart here, no?
I mean, if it's close with those pot odds, with better pot odds, it'd be like more likely to cool, no?
To just, it's easy, okay? Like, if you're not gonna call the check raise off, you're just torching equity, so just play call. Don't ever check raise it. If you're gonna, if you're planning to call it off, check raise it.
Yeah, I wasn't thrilled, but it's fine. I'll rebuy it. It's early, it's whatever.
Yeah, let's move on. Second bullet.
Second bullet. Ten eight again, they're mocking me.
You gonna do it again? You gonna do it again?
Certainly not.
So you guys calling?
You wonder if it's a fold? I don't think it's a fold. Off thirty, ten eight.
Okay.
Are you saying from the big blind?
Do you call ten seven?
No.
It's, it's multi-way. You're gonna defend like your, your tens and nines here.
Tens, I mean, ten seven, it might be a, a mix, you know?
You're also like only thirty big blinds, so you get to cool a bit wider.
Eight, ten, seven.
Okay.
Okay, alright, that. Uh, is this to lose?
Probably.
Probably the four, right? Expending is probably not the end of the world, if anything. I go off suit Dave, but this is very close, right? Whoa, 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 whoa. Okay, bucket six.
Adding something like that on a button isn't bad if your opponents are gonna three bet you.
Yeah, the theme of this is disrespect.
Well, I mean, I think, I think the cold call is kinda close, you know, we're in, we're in the, what, low jack, and we're quite shallow.
Is this a good bet first? Person foremost.
Maybe not.
I don't hate it, they just very rarely, I mean, it's hard to hit that eight from any range. It's not the craziest thing. I like that it's small.
What about sizing?
I like the sizing.
I, I like the sizing.
Anyone know one big line ever here?
Twenty-five percent seems good.
If you, if you're, if you're wanting to lean one big blind, just check.
Yeah, I also, I just don't have a strategy, like a comprehensive strategy. Like, I have a sense of what my bluffs look like for like a quarter to third pot, and I have a sense of what my value looks like. I don't really know what I'm doing with one big blind.
Uh, nevermind, I'm sorry. I thought it was three handed, not four handed. I'm checking four handed.
Maybe two, Louis.
So we face a check raise. And a call.
And a call.
No, this is a fold. Like, if you're, this is, you, don't call, Danny, please don't call.
Yeah, always a fold.
Come on.
I was scared.
Actually, I was probably gonna call the one guy, and I was, I did have the best hand still. Best hand.
You, you were building it up, Danny. You were talking like it's a theme of disrespect and da-da-da-da-da.
So this guy calling with ace ten, uh, what do you think about that? It's pretty awful, right?
It's horrendous.
Yeah, I marked him.
My god.
And this is the same guy, right? Fine one?
Yeah.
Same guy. Yeah, yeah, so I'm, I'm like, fuck this guy, like, he's just fucking around too much. I can't do anything but jam here. Just get there immediately.
Seems loose passive though, so when he bets, he's more likely to have something.
Yeah. Uh, that was probably bad.
No, I, yeah. Asai, you got nothing. So here, I like a stab.
Yeah, try Asai is a good bet.
I might bet big there because we blocked the floats.
I would bet one big line here.
That's my default. I was trying something different. Sometimes people blast off into you if you check. I wanna have some.
So I, I really don't like this call because even though like it's kind of. How are you gonna play?
Rainbow, there's some gutters.
If you just foul, how do you play for stacks on the river?
You're just gonna have to let him bluff.
What's he raising besides the jack?
Jam over his bet.
I mean, like.
Queen tens.
Yeah, is he your own?
Nine, ten, queen ten.
Honestly, I think this is, I think this is fine. Like, it's such a dry board. He's gonna have a hard time continuing, and if he's bluffing. Great. You can try to get value on the river by like just piling over it, I guess.
They were in position.
So do you like checking here?
I, I, this is not my standard play. I would bet small here, just because I would wanna bet small here with all my airballs too, but I, um. I, I don't think this is like a blender mixing this in every once in a while, especially having a guy with seven point five big blinds behind. He's just gonna. Pick up a pair of sevens on the turn or something sometimes and just put it in, you know?
Or pick up a diamond draw.
And if you're gonna have any check range, you do wanna keep one or two of these in range to protect your checking range.
I don't, I don't, I don't think it's like bad. I would bet though, is how I play this, like, like. Like Danny said, it's like Danny said, it's a standard to bet it, but he was trying something else, which I think is fine.
If you are gonna do it, the rainbow board is the one to do it on, too.
Yep, I agree a hundred percent.
We got a ton of worse jacks that can check that would also unblock their continuing range, like King's gonna unblock some of their calls. So I think it's, um, good to, uh, check the king jack and bet worse jacks.
I think, I think I'd prefer to slip play ahead like aces than trips.
Yeah, but I still want some like jack X when I check, I think.
I think check, I think checking King's good, cuz you, they're gonna continue with over cards, right? So you don't want that. You want worse jacks to bet, right? Yep, you got a shit ton of them from the button.
Alright.
Do you bet or, or not?
Do you what?
Is this a club bet?
I would say probably not. I would play this as a, uh, a check, cuz this is gonna be a polarizing texture, I think.
I think exploitatively you can bet.
You don't achieve too much with a bet.
You, hey dude, you get to fold over cards, you're king ten.
Don't you?
Yeah, I'm betting this a lot, honestly.
Um, king ten probably supposed to float. Well, he's fifteen bigs.
Yeah, but it's eleven dollar tournament, they're not going to.
It's one of the worst pairs we open as well, so we're gonna bet some of our worst pairs.
I mean, GTO will be a check, I'm sure.
Good check.
Yeah, yeah, but I think exploitively you can just bet rage.
He's so short that you can delayed C bet on the turn, how the stronger hand when you get a six and eight or a four on the turn?
So, but about when the three pairs and?
Exactly. I would delay that turn a lot.
I'm calling. He's telling he's got a three or nothing.
Spends as much time as he can in an arcade.
I don't know. Some people will like take a seven and be like, I think I have the best hand. I don't wanna see a river. You check it back, I'm on.
If he's gonna do this, he probably gonna check raise a nine when he has it, so.
This feels like a complete guessing game. Like, I would never be putting chips in at this point.
Yeah, like, a lot of the time they do this with flush draws, and there's no flush draw there, so, like.
Like Peter said that.
As high here.
Yeah.
He's got something.
A seven or a nine, right?
I agree with Dan, like, it's just, it's an underbluff spot on the rainbow run out.
Okay, I like the full, honestly.
If I'm ahead, it's only by a little, and if I'm behind, I'm dead to go outs.
This is, this is.
This is fun.
No, 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 you don't call here. You, I, I, I love calling, but you're not calling there.
Um, I think at this point, we're like. Maybe end of late reg as well, and I have a caching stack, and I, I have like a decent position. So there's no need to really gamble here. Even if I think he's spearing. Wait, did I lag out? Where'd I get all these chips from?
Aces.
Yeah, you had aces and sixes and they both held.
Oh, alright, so I lagged out. I missed all of that.
Uh, guy jams, late position, guy cold calls, you have aces and big one, you go in three ways, you win.
Alright, I refreshed. Yeah, sometimes Zoom just gets super laggy and I, uh, it's a bunch of stuff.
So this is not a dream back.
Uh, okay.
I mean, I think it can be sometimes.
So, what about, what about likes, what about like it's seventy effective? Like typically, I agree with you, Louis, but when you get a little bit deeper, does it start to work its way in there?
So.
Neither.
The, okay.
The reason that you wanna do a lot of calling here is with Asai flushes, you incentivize the small blind to come on in with worse flushes.
You need to have like forty big blind more.
Okay, right, okay.
Uh, what if you go ICM twenty-five percent field?
We are fifteen hands and, and Danny, I highly doubt that.
He registered, he registered thirty bigs, though.
I late regged. Alright, go fifty percent field then.
One hundred thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven percent field.
If, the good thing about cool is you're keeping worse aces as well.
I'm guessing there's like fifty percent at least here, and even.
It's gonna be thirty-seven. When, on ACR, whenever late reg is over, you're by default, you're like a third of the field.
Yeah, that sounds, sounds.
Yeah, but how do you know late reg is over?
Yeah, to be fair, it probably isn't, right?
Might not be.
But, but these aren't all the hands, right? These are just your marked ones, though.
So.
Well, these are the wrong, uh, wrong stacks.
Yeah.
Be a little bit of a yes.
Need like one stack, cuz me and him were both big stack.
So, thirty-seven percent, sixty big blind, symmetric. Would still be more of a call.
Yeah, we're not symmetric, so.
Say we're forty. Still more of a call. Uh, thirty. Thirty gets in there.
I'll find one I like. You can move on. Let me see.
Three point six out of ten.
Ooh, this is kind of a, uh. Uh, I don't think, okay, so like, I don't think it's close with the suited one, but what did you do with the offsuit one here?
I don't know.
But it didn't.
I think he still probably called, but like, he was saying that, you were saying we're close to the money bubble. It was the only reason I'm thinking like. A little more critically about it.
Yeah, but.
We're not that close. We're not that close.
We're still seventeen hands in, and I highly doubt.
If we lose, we have forty-five big lines.
That were like.
I don't know, man. Danny's pretty nitty. He might have just folded for fifteen orbits or something.
You get to be more loose.
If that's the World Series main event, you probably fold.
I kid, I kid, I kid.
What about line levels? What does that tell you?
I, uh, I'm not a Bozki reg, so I can't really.
One K, two K, yeah, we're still. Um, this is like the last level of reg, or the second to last level of reg. Reg is still open.
Okay, if it's last, if it's last level of reg, I mean, starting stacks should be like around ten big blinds or so. So, or maybe fifteen.
I think twenty-five hundred big blind is the last, the actual last level, so we're one level off for.
I'm not fo, I mean, I'm not folding, I'm not folding the offsuit in here. I'm just putting the chips in. Like, it's, it's the end of reg, like, whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, this guy has ace queen.
I'm building a stack.
Fucking go.
Nice river card.
Cure pain on that river, man.
Oh, he boated up, well.
Yeah. Sneaky boat. By the way, I found a sim that's like kind of close to what we had with the ace ten, where small blind covers button, and we're both. Good on chips, and the ace ten, it's a half and half.
Mm-hmm.
Um, do we like a check or a bet here? Multi-way, four far five?
I like multi. Multi would play check.
Isn't, isn't the five, the word, the five and the six paired like the worst, but in position, usually?
Yep.
Uh, kind of, yes. Against a big one.
So like.
That's some of my better aces, I think.
Cut off should have five, six, should have ace five, king five's cutting it close. Like, we don't have a ton of five X, but. I don't know. I would play check multi-way. It's just kinda my default. I'm protecting my equity with my ace highs here at this point.
I think you can bet small if you want with range, just to fold out everything, but check is fine.
The ace comes in, the flush completes, you check again.
Yeah, man, they expect me to bet. I'm not falling for that.
What do you mean?
I'm kinda trolling, but, uh, I think it's nice to still have some, uh, double checks when I have the ace.
Yeah.
Um, again, like, if I had a better ace, I might bet. If I had a diamond, I would bet.
Yeah, it's kinda curious. I don't, I don't know. I, I go back and forth.
I think it's kinda the other way around for me. If I have a diamond, I don't mind checking maybe a little more, bit more often, whereas if I don't have a diamond.
Yeah, I'm kinda, I'm kinda leaning, I'm kind of in Louis's shoes here. Like, there's a lot of single diamond hands that. That they're gonna continue with, that I think you're leaving on the table, but.
Hmm.
Um.
You get raised by fives, you get raised by the flush.
If they are playing checking, you, and you get check raised here, you are in a miserable spot, and like, I don't know, does this hand stand up to like a check raise? Jam on the river? I don't know.
Yeah, you can definitely be missing value, for sure.
So, we go all in?
No, yeah, you go even smaller.
Why not all in? What's the difference?
What's gonna call you? You wanna keep a five in.
So, for, for, for him to call.
Time is folding to an all in.
Well, for him to call, okay, like, if you're jamming, you're assuming that this guy also, he has a five that he double checked to get to the river to bet small with. Which is just like. I don't know. I don't think that's a thing really too much. Double checking.
Click it and like open up a, a re-bluff.
I would be.
By sevens. I wanna get paid by king high, I don't know.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I'm kinda with you, Danny. I think like targeting a cry call from a king, a sticky king is gonna. Pay you more than trying to, uh.
You, you guys think people are out there calling with king I?
Let him re-bluff me with the four, like, I don't know.
But like, sometimes they have pocket nines here, sometimes they have a small flush.
Call it flush.
You're calling with king I here, man?
That's it is.
I checked twice, you know?
It's one of those fucking Brazilians.
Really have an ace?
God.
It is a Brazilian, isn't it? MVN Fontana.
Alright.
So, so what, what's the best size?
I like all in, but people seem to like raise small more.
Louis, if you jam, you can't be bluffing. Like, how are you ever bluffing for all?
Doesn't, doesn't matter, does it?
I can't be bluffing about it.
If your opponent's not thick in the head.
Think about, uh, a six-six here and a diamond here that you could bluff, like king a diamond. It's a bit spicy. But a six, like king six with the king of diamond. You know, she'd somehow been there with that.
Or just a four, maybe.
A four, a showdown.
No, you got counterfeit.
Yeah, but. I like a bet here. Three, you gotta call.
I would be very tempted to call here, but he's only got seven behind.
I could ask to call here, right?
I'm folding.
I thought about this forever. I even forget what I did.
Yeah, maybe it's better to fold it.
I, yeah, we, this guy has to have the gall of turning a, a flush draw that he check raised into a bluff when it. When it trips out, or he's just.
Believe him at all. Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, well, I'm kinda, I'm, I don't know, it's tough. Like, he's gonna have a seven here sometimes also that he's just like. Gonna be putting in? I don't know.
We're gonna see a king a lot, I think.
I landed on, he just has a seven too often. I guess I fold.
I kind of agree that he has a seven.
I bet here. Big bet.
Hmm.
I like big bet.
You could big bet this, um. You could. A small's fine too, though. I, this isn't bad by any means.
Like king nine flush draw, it feels like, uh, if you have some size ups.
I mean.
No, you just got shot the queen, you can bluff on the diamond maybe.
I mean, we will, we will.
Turns and rivers for you, like the ace is pretty good.
It, it's gonna be a fine small bet, too.
Bet's big more than anything.
Yeah.
So like.
I didn't feel like I had to against this opponent.
Well, I mean, just look at the global frequency. So you got twenty-three, one point two.
I'm sure betting small is not bad, right?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's like, yeah, you definitely polarize. You can definitely polarize here. Makes a lot of sense.
Over loves the big bets with the shitty draws, but.
Check, check on the brick. Are you checking here on this brick, bud?
Is it a break turn, though? The flush draws come in, he did. But he didn't check raise us, so you also have to, and like, he should be check raising some of his, a lot of his flush draws, to be honest.
So like the turn, we should be betting it fifty percent of the time. If you don't find fifty percent turn barrels here.
I actually, that was a pretty large bet too, right? I was thinking like half pot, that was pretty big, isn't it?
But something that I can balance it, uh, when it's a brick on the turn, you can kind of barrel again.
You can, and I honestly, I, I don't mind barreling here, and I would say this is like a semi-brick, right? Cuz he should be check raising his flush draws. He didn't check raise, so he's got like fractions of his flush draws now?
Well, he doesn't check raise his flush draws against the big size all the time, too, though. Right?
I think I tend to underbluff some turns when I don't feel like I have immediate fault equity.
I mean.
For fear of having to bluff river and like not knowing if I should.
So, sixty percent check on, uh, when the flush completes, but what if it doesn't?
My read is that like the online meta right now really rewards, um. Uh, more, actually, like a lot of turn bluffing, cuz I think a lot of people figured out that like you call one and see what happens. And I think, I think the turn meta has been to definitely follow through a lot.
So, if the flush doesn't complete, we check less. What if it's like a six of clubs? Yeah, we still barrel it out with this second one.
Barrel big, overbet.
Like, it's way better having hearts here than spades, right?
What do you mean?
To like barrel the turn.
Why?
Cuz spades, like, he, he floats with, he floats spades, like, like with like ace ten suited, ace set of spades.
You're, you're definitely gonna be betting like some single spade hands here. Like, this is a good turn for, if you have the, if you have the queen of spades here, like, if you have queen ten with the. The queen of spades, it's gonna be a good barrel. Um, if you have a, if you have two spades, you have a flush. I'm sorry, I'm thinking diamonds. Ignore me. You're right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I agree with Lewis, you don't wanna have.
Yeah, spades are bad. I was, I was talking.
I was so confused what you're going on about.
Yeah, like, I guess Ga, Gaolin lost his mind, yeah, apparently.
You ever jam it in here?
No, 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 no.
Wait, actually, wait, why, why wouldn't you jam it here?
Need a diamond.
Do you?
Still, I'm not sure. Like, I'm thinking, I might lose my shit with a diamond cuz he did this to me, but I don't know if that's good.
People leave the flushes here, man. In these low stakes case, when it's lead, it's like almost always a fucking flush.
I agree. You guys talking about jamming. I'm like, what is this nonsense?
You're saying.
Always a flush.
I simply asked a question, alright.
So you're saying jam over a donk? I don't think you do, but, um, if he does check, you don't think you, do you triple off a hand like this?
No, the turn was check, check.
On a ace river, you gotta fire it.
That's what, that's, that's what I was saying, yeah.
I kind of agree. Yeah, you're gonna have, you're gonna have a decent betting frequency there, but, uh, yeah, not over that lead.
What did you do? You folded?
Yeah, I folded.
Yeah, I think you needed. I think you needed diamond to block there.
What do you mean? You're like, you got Jack I.
Anything, Jack ten is like our bad blockers, cuz it blocks other straight draws that didn't get there.
Mm-hmm.
Just fold. Yeah. Ah, whoa, whoa, whoa.
I might have missed an open here.
I. Yeah, this is definitely in this part, right? So this is definitely an open, right?
I mixed more of these in. I don't know if I did in this run, but I've been finding more of these since we, um. Looked at them the other day.
Jack eight, you can limp and then call, but jack seven, you can't limp call, so you gotta raise.
Right.
But this is, oh, wait, it's twenty big line. I don't know. I thought it were twenty or forty. Uh.
I can, I can go two and a half.
But what, where I'm going with this is here with this pay. I believe we have a debt.
Did I check?
Yes.
Oh.
So, okay, on the flop, it's not, it's not betting at all, actually. And then, pre-flop, it's, it is raising, no?
Yeah, yeah, it makes sense.
And if we raise, I think I would, but. Okay, so check today.
Check call.
Then on the turn. Then on the turn.
Got a bet big, I think.
Bet big?
I think so.
Why?
I like betting big, too.
We got a lot of good blockers here and actually draws and, uh, Jack high, so.
I think I like betting like five.
And villain capped himself. I mean, villain's really gonna wanna bet, like lots of pieces of that flop when you check two.
Machine wants a bet big, you guys are right.
Yeah, and bet small.
But not five big, like, two and a half.
No, it, it wants to overbet.
It was eighty and a hundred and twenty-five. So I merge, I have mercy bets here all the time.
Two and a half or three point six, like.
Okay, and then on the river, do you fire again?
Kinda, yeah, we have all the blockers. Um, I'm, I'm not too bothered by having a spade in hand, I'm more happy about having both a jack and a seven in hand.
Yeah, I was gonna wait, I was gonna wait and say.
So.
Uh, you gotta bet big.
Turn went check, check, right?
No.
We bet turn?
You bet one, bet one.
All in.
Okay, I think you missed an all in here, Danny.
I prefer the risk reward.
Using that size, so it's fine.
No, they just literally cannot call, like. We, we said we're on soft bubble anyway, right?
Okay.
Um, at this point, yes.
Not like soft bubble, but you know, like, but like people are looking at like, am I gonna cash this tournament? Let's say that.
Oh, we're still on this level? Jeez. Alright, late reg is still open.
Thank you, Danny.
Yeah, that's a deterrent to jamming, I think.
What have I done?
I mean, if you think he'll fold for a cheaper price, why not? Go smaller.
Here, pocket nine, he rains. Place a jam, snap it off. And hope.
Happy days.
Happy days.
Whoa. Oh yeah, back to back.
Wait a second, what did he do? Did he open, he leant him, what did you raise to?
God, that guy punted.
Yeah.
Ace, ace ten O.
Well, I can't have a good hand, two hands in a row, man.
Raised two big blows, you raised two big blinds that was limp, it's funny.
Is he's big blind?
No, he was in the big blind.
Yeah, he was in the big blind.
Oh, he's lit, so you raised one big blind.
No, no, he's been raised.
Oh, he's.
Normal amount, yeah.
But he ra- he raised the call and, and raised the call.
Is this a call to raise or a raise to call?
He called the raise.
Are you calling a raise?
Are we calling the raise?
Are, are you?
Clicks so fast.
Let's move on.
Uh, this one feels either way. I don't know, king high, board versus under the gun mono, I don't have the, the card, but I have a six.
I like, I like your reasoning.
I'm folding, I wouldn't be surprised if the machine calls one though, but whatever.
I'm not folding, but I like Danny's reasoning.
I feel like if. If he bet one point six, I might have called two, I felt it was.
Yeah, I knew it wasn't gonna fold, I don't give a shit.
Uh, machine says a zero point fifteen call, so it's fifteen big lines per hundred to fold.
You call the middle pair.
Wait, I'm not supposed to call pre? Is that what that sign means up there?
No, 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 it says call pre, that's fine, and then holding here on the flop is not good.
Okay, that's why. That's why, that's why.
But, you know, you guys are good reasoning, you know, king eye. Monoton, no card of the suit against TP. I like your reasoning.
You basically just read the board off and justified a fold even though it was a call.
We three bet king nine there?
Oh, this must be a free bet sometimes, surely.
I mean, I.
Generally, you don't fold any pair or any diamond.
Alright, alright.
No one likes a three bet, huh?
I do, I like a three bet. But I think you can, you can mix.
Uh, no, man, your thirty big blinds effective, how do you handle a four bet?
Oh, we were, we were forty.
Right here, right here?
No.
Oh, we're talking about old hands still and looking at new hands.
Glazed right over and I said, do we like a three bet here?
Oh.
No, I wouldn't.
From the small blind, you wanna be raising your offsuit stuff more than yours.
I don't see anything wrong here.
Your student stuff is particularly when ace and king high flushes is gonna be more resilient against the small blind coming along. Where they're gonna be coming along with worse suited stuff.
So do we have a japping room here?
Ye- yes, you do. Well, actually.
Tried, tried to guess it for me, is it suited jack suited ten?
Yep, yep, you don't. Stuff like that.
We're fifty deep.
Thank you, God, thank you. You don't jam fifty deep.
We're only fifty deep against big blind, small blind and cutoff with the thirty.
Yeah, but he matters.
Yeah, you can't just, you can't just like say we're thirty effective and ignore the fact that the big blind has you, uh, basically covered.
It's there, he's in the hand.
The person who's the most important is the opener and then the other two come after him, so.
Forty effective king nine suited is a pure three bet, guys, not a call ever.
I found it in ICM twenty-five percent and it looks like it three bits, king six, seven, eight.
Jack LoJack.
Calls king nine, ten, jack, queen.
I thought the freshman opened at a hundred and twenty-seven, so maybe not at thirty.
Ken wants to three.
I looked at forty.
Can't look at chip.
That's still, that's still goes a lot at thirty, but forty is.
You're right, Ken, you got it. You got it. We could have three bet. Alright, here we are. So here on the flop. Check, check.
I'm, I, I don't know, man, I'm checking.
Give up.
I've better stuff to bet.
You have a stab here, no?
I love the best hand sometimes, too.
No stabbing at all.
Not with this hand, you bet, you bet, you said with range of decent amount, but not really with this hand.
Louis, Louis said and it's all cool, you wanna bet multi-way when you have equity, right? Good equity. This does not have good equity.
Yeah, like, here's the best case scenario.
Somebody did their homework.
With worse queens and worse kings when you check here. And when you turn one, now you have a hand.
I believe the big line has the. On this flop, a big line has the range advantage, that's why you don't bet, I think it's a good check.
Yep. Uh, big blind does not have the range advantage, but it's, yeah, anyway, you don't have much hand, that's true.
Not advantage.
Wanna look it up for fun?
Trips advantage. Look what up, oh. No, we're gonna, we, we have better spots later to waste time on.
There we go. Keep him in line, Danny, keep him moving.
Just read Louis Philippe's article, man. How to play multi-way parts online.
Yeah, see, Louis, Louis used your own article against you, Louis. Did you read your own article?
I mean, Louis didn't say, he just asked the question.
Nah, he had checked you, he hasn't read it.
I'm gonna try and open the yellow. That. Thing is, uh, you kinda have like, uh. A showdown hand, but it's a pair of board, and we could maybe get some a size to fold, no? Like diamonds. I'm just guessing, maybe it could be a bet sometimes.
Hey, man, I, I wouldn't be shocked if it was betting sometimes, but the problem with like multi-way spots is, we don't have like. Great points of reference, like, we have DTO, but it's eh, it's okay.
Yeah, I, I don't really trust DTO as much as simple three-way.
So we would have cutoff button and big blind at thirty. Have a quick look and then the board is similar to.
I mean, it was at fifty, but, I mean.
Big blind, cutoff button, thirty. Play her board.
We could look at both, because big blind's fifty.
Her board, uh, other. Was exactly this one.
Exactly.
It's five, five, nine, yeah.
So probably.
Eight, five, five. Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it rainbow or is there a flush draw?
There's a flush draw. Oh, yeah, that one's gonna be.
Uh, this is eight, eight, five, so probably this one, right?
Yeah.
Or seven, seven, six with a flush draw.
They're all a little different.
Yeah.
I would go the eight, five, five rainbow.
I just wanna have a quick idea of the button strategy on this type of boards. But we're not here with king, queen suited, at all.
Thirty effective, maybe we, um.
Why do you think? I was gonna say, yeah, why do you think? I think we're probably just pushing it in pre.
Change it to fifty, do the fifty effective. Cause, cause a bird for fifty effect with the big one.
Well, we can see here, hands like, kind of king jack doesn't really wanna bet, but a hand like king eight, that could make a straight here. Bets are not more, so worse kings, so we can guess that worse.
Yeah, like queen ten, jack ten, stuff that.
Like, look at king, queen, ah, versus king ten off. But we can just guess here that this is probably fancy.
And queen jack off. You want, it's stuff that benefits more from fold equity. Um, cuz you make, like, king, queen, I have the best king high, right? But if queen high, then I can make king high fold and. Have more back, backdoor straight stuff.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I think you wanna spade as well, like, like queen, queen jack with a spade.
So now we hit, and then. We go out, but.
Uh, I don't hate this, um, I think like, I think in theory it might go smaller, but I, I like this.
I like it as well, I wouldn't wanna go bigger though.
I mean, we've got, we've got the best.
Bigger, it's gonna make the same result, they're gonna fold.
Yeah.
We got, we got the best hand, like, almost always, uh.
Heads up, I would go a little bigger.
No, you're betting for value, I think even there I will, uh, one carder, but, uh, bet.
Is this a bet, is this a pure bet? I wasn't sure, game.
I think, I think you got a better hit.
Um, I think you could even maybe go big here, like you might be.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. This board is not a range bet for sure, right? We would, I like the big.
I think we bet seventy percent of the time here, you know, so.
I think it's, it's probably more than that. I think this is pretty rangy, it's pretty like a two's a blank and it's a dry queen high board.
But we don't polarize here, my guess is.
Yeah, I don't think we'll have big, I don't think we'll have big bets here, and our big size will be like half pot.
This guy's also only twenty effective, you don't have to have a big bet here to put.
Well, half pot is big.
Exactly.
Half pot is big.
Well, it is a majority bet.
Mm-hmm.
And then we're just losing small sizes.
Yeah, I, I did miss the fact that we're only like twenty effective or whatever it is.
This hand does check some.
He has twenty-two bigs.
And can you hover it? The ace three suited, does it check the most with hearts? Checks the least with hearts, maybe?
Yeah, cuz the other ones have backdoor flush draws, so you have additional equity.
Alright, anyway, we bink it.
I like.
That's funny.
That's not the silliest thing you'll see this tournament.
Okay, just a call, is this a good call?
Yeah.
Uh, pro- well, so the small blind only has five big blinds, I'm. Like, uh.
I'm not calling here. Like, you gotta let Andy handle things sometimes, right, Andy?
I think Andy's gonna do a good job for you, uh, Danny, but I, I don't, I don't fault you for calling here at all. I think it's fine, but.
I wanna bust them both.
My spidey senses are going off when Taco Boy puts chips in here.
Look at that, he bet folded, did you see that?
I did, I did see that. I wasn't sure.
Question, did we sort by Vip?
Yeah, he did.
That means we're gonna miss the BBB spots, just saying.
I know, I warned Louis. I only have till eleven thirty anyway, so, uh, we're trying to keep it shorter, I guess.
Monoton smalls.
I don't get bigger bet here, is this a good idea?
No, it's monotonic, locked up equity.
Yeah, although, when there's no broadway, you can kind of size up.
I, I don't have big bets here, I just bet one third with range.
I'm with Louis. I don't have big bets on monotone boards typically.
Yeah, like, if, when you bet large, what do you think he's doing with like ten jack of hearts, right? If you wanna make his pairs call you and be miserable.
It's just the property of when there's no, uh, ace or king. Uh, on the board, on the monotone board, you can kind of size up a little bit, but it's not very apparent here.
I mean.
I think if there's an ace, then you do size up sometimes.
We also have the nuts, so like, we wanna bet small. We want him to continue. With like a four X.
I would bet again, small to check back the river. But this.
On a monotone board, generally if it doesn't pair or the flush doesn't complete, you continue barreling small.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I would, that's what I would do. But I, it's just the only reason I would say that also when the ace comes, if you play check, check and it bricks. You kinda open yourself up to like difficult spots, like if he blasts nearly pot on the river and the deuce or hearts rolls out, what do you do?
Yeah, yeah, it's rough.
But there's just a lot of combos to get value from as well, you know?
Well, that too, well, that too, that's the other side of the coin, right, Louis?
Very true.
Say who?
We defended big blind, we bricked completely, we'll have better blush than this, just check, check gold. If it checks down, we chop sometimes.
Yeah, we chop sometimes, I agree.
I honestly, like, you probably could get away jamming here, but I would definitely look at the guy's HUD and see. If he's capable, and also he's using like, it's a nitpicky thing, but he's using a full, like. It's not full three X, but it's a little bit larger for sub thirty.
Oh, it says standard.
This size seems completely normal to me, but, uh, his stats were like fairly.
We're looking to solve, isn't it like a pure jam?
No.
Uh.
I think it's mixing their color fold, not jamming.
Oh, no, it, I think it definitely will jam sometimes.
I wasn't sure. I thought it was a pretty good candidate, and then I wussed out. I looked it up after and it jams a lot.
You don't get the fold, two is pure jams.
Isn't it usually all fives and sixes? Chippy V, if you look in ICM, I think it's jamming more.
Oh. Well, yeah, uh. Like that, the four and five is bad because it blocks his three bet blocks, base four and ace five. So that's why threes go full and. Or five, six is less.
He had how many bigs? Twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight.
Alright, I found a good one.
Are you looking at the ICM adjusted ones?
Yeah.
What is the three bet sizing that you're using as you get more and more adjusted?
This is twenty-nine effective, cutoff goes two point one, button goes five point seven seven.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, so like, if he's not like a, like I said, it was a, it was a nitpicky thing, but.
But still, like, we went to a larger RFI sizing, so he went point two big blinds larger, like.
So he went point three larger, we went pu- point one larger.
It was five point seven seven, he said, so five point eight, and we.
Yes, so like, two and a half X are point one, so it works out, yeah. Alright, what is this?
Do here, easy fold?
I think you got fold here.
What do you do with, uh, king, queen, super though?
Oh, cool.
King, jack, super.
I'm, I'm folding.
Cool as well.
Did we see the hand right before this? Was that against him as well? I had a read, no. Alright, not that hand.
Oh my goodness.
I played a hand against this guy, maybe it's filtered out. Where he cold called small blind with nine deuce off, and like. I don't know, I just thought this guy was going crazy with, for no reason.
Alright, so let me ask, if he's going crazy, why would that like make you go crazier?
I'm just like way ahead with king ten suited, if he's going crazy.
Like, um. I don't know, when I think someone that's like expanding their range, I would wanna be like more top-heavy linear, not ex. I wouldn't necessarily wanna expand my. Linear portion, but.
So this probably needs one tip out.
So like, if he shows you ace deuce offsuit here.
Gonna say, what if he's jamming aces too wide?
Yeah, well, if he's got ace deuce offsuit, like, are you st- are you stoked to be shown?
No, but I thought he would have like ten, seven suited a lot too.
Okay, well, it's fair.
Based on one hand, you said you saw, you played one hand with him.
Yeah, based on one hand, but one hand can reveal a lot.
But like, also he called that, he didn't jam it, so you don't really know what his jamming range is, if he's playing aggressively.
Well, we're gonna know what his range, jamming range looks like. Well, we're gonna know what his range, jamming range looks like.
Yeah. See, this was like, honestly, this is completely like reasonable, like sevens, seven, sevens is not like really crazy.
Oh, it's not at all.
I thought you were gonna say Danny's plays reasonable, and I'm like, probably not.
I, okay, so like.
But then again, look at the chart, right? It's like one pip out, and then if Danny really thinks the guy's out of line, one pip out is not the end of the world.
Yeah, but he was out of line with a call, not with an aggressive action.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just taking.
Yeah, maybe he took his note a little quick on that guy.
I'm, I'm taking issue with him making. A call like that on a. Insufficient information.
I, I just think you're never, I just think you're never ahead there.
Oh, by the way.
Yeah, you don't know how is, you don't know how his range is expanding, like. A lot of people out of position here are gonna be jamming just like all their asex too wide, and that's gonna put you in a worse spot than if they're jamming. You know, suited pens or whatever.
Yeah, like, like are they jamming King nine? Like, that's what you wanna.
This is almost pure bubble here.
Okay, I like this plan. Check raise a good ace, that's good, from this time down, this one.
Pure bubble, pure bubble.
Hmm, yeah, okay.
Yeah, but you're, you're similar stack style, right?
Yeah.
You, you get, you have to play a bit more passive when you're the same stack.
So what did you do now? I'm sorry, I walked away.
He's setting Jack suited, twenty bigs, blind versus blind. All covering.
Crazy, it's just not great.
He just can't call except for the tops of his range, so, and even then you have, like, clean outs.
Would you just jam on him? I don't think that's crazy too. I don't think it's too crazy.
Yeah, that's what I.
I think it's standard.
That region definitely puts it in sometimes.
I mean, it's, it's a lot of risk to wind all that much, though, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, it's no risk, it's free chips, it's, I see two and a half.
You just haven't not been hurt.
This is in the money, this is in the money.
I mean, you're gaining like twelve percent of your stack.
Wait, wait, what do you, what do we think about this one? I was really close on this one.
Not a fact.
This, has the bubble burst?
Yeah, we're in the money.
Hmm.
Freshly.
I think it's probably a jam. It's like bottom of the range, though.
Yeah.
I would lean call here, to be honest.
He sized up, I don't like.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, that's what I was gonna say, Nick. He went two point five. So.
Yeah, but Louis, we gotta check, um. ICM now.
Oh, the bubble burst, it's very little ICM now.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, there's little, but there is some. It's still the same as Chippy Bay.
We hate doing a Chippy V.
We can't check it cuz the proper ICM won't have stacks short enough.
Well, you actually, well, never, never mind, you can't really.
Or maybe seventy percent will.
I think it's a slide, don't care, but.
Not a great jam here, I think.
What's the chart doing?
I mean, like, when, when we, when we're cooled, we're flipping sometimes, when we get it through, we win like five bigs. Increase our stack a lot, you know?
Yeah, I like a jam, especially with the sizing each other, it's like, we're gonna wanna call less and jam more.
Pure jam, ICM fifty percent.
I think, I think mathematically it's profitable, you know? ICM's not that high.
Like sevens that you call.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
ICM fifty percent looks very, very similar to the Chippy V there.
He also, he also opened up like two point five, so like, look at it twenty, or like eight, nineteen if you have it, just. To kind of see, it may like make more SPR sense.
Yeah, so you're calling more and more the deeper you.
Cuz you're, you're one big blind deeper in game and he opened up two point five, so like your SPR is gonna reflect twenty, more than seventeen, but. I mean, i- it's kinda whatever, like.
No, your SPR would go down, not up.
Yeah, yeah, SPR decreases and because they're polarizing, your response and return is gonna be more polarized, so you're gonna wanna jam more and call less.
And then the question is, are eights still good enough when they open bigger? And I think they are.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't like it, honestly, I'm more like call.
You have nothing to lose anymore, like, you need to take some spots.
I mean, that's a good spot, I think that's a good spot.
Yeah.
Oh.
This is bad.
Savage.
Sometimes I, I know I'm supposed to call here, but sometimes I just don't feel like it.
Alright, so let me ask.
Yeah, yeah.
So, why would you?
If you look at the EVs, they're like point oh one.
No, man, like that, it's point one off when you have a balanced range, like, when you're doing this with an unbalanced range, it's definitely not one point off. And then like I think about it, like, why would you pick a hand like this if you wanted to get out of line?
Yeah.
And I, why not pick like Queen Deuce Offsuit or some like absolute garbage? Where you're kind of.
Better theory, Jim.
King two off, where you have a blocker or something.
Yeah, 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 King two off is even better.
Those are better theory jams.
I mean, he said, he said he was out of line, so he knows.
This is a pure jam, so like, how bad can it be against a small blind open? It's just cuz I have position, it prefers to call.
It's a high.
Yeah, I know, it's suited, it's better to call and play suited in position.
This is a pure jam versus button open, I don't think so.
Yeah.
Can we see that in the charts, please?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not jam, I'm, yeah, that seems like a weird, uh.
Yeah, ninety, ninety. That is, uh, I don't know.
You jab a little suited eights.
Yeah, I was gonna say, like, you're only twenty big blinds effective, I, 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 that seems, um. Maybe if you were like forty, you could start pulling from that area, seems odd. That's stacked up.
Yeah, pure call.
Talking about, Danny.
Oh, Jack eight suited pure jam.
Jack eight pure call.
Nah, you're looking at the wrong chart, bro.
I'm on.
You said verse button.
Chippy V again.
Yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
What do you wanna look at?
Queen eight has slivers of jamming too, it's same EV.
We went from pure to slivers very quickly there.
What, alright, it's one off, it's fine.
I don't know, you, you see, yeah.
No, like, one off is significant, you can expand your range by one everywhere, like.
No one.
It's a tournament, I can do whatever I want. I think he's gonna fold too much.
Danny, Danny.
Okay.
No one likes it, I'm just saying.
Alright, I already agreed that it was wrong, but I'm, it's not far off, like.
Plus, he's beating you here, what are you doing?
He's getting better hands to, he's getting better hands to fold.
Jamming.
It's kinda crazy.
The big qu- the big question, I think is, is this player has been trying to steal a lot of time?
Man, this is just such a disaster, like, why would we put our, we, we lost our entire stack with Queen eight suited here when we didn't need to.
Yeah, this is a disaster.
Oh, we flushed them, we got them.
Wait, are we gonna spin it back up?
What do you mean?
Spin it back up, we got them, we flushed them.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed it, sorry, I saw the straight, I was looking at.
Little bitch calling me with King Jack.
Little bitch, he called me with King Jack on it.
Danny.
No, it's a standard call.
Oh my god. Check, bet, we have the spade. It's a big.
Release the cheese, release the cheese.
This is a fold, easy fold, with three way, three handed.
Release the cheese.
Good job.
Uh, I really wanna jam.
I wanna jam.
This looks like a jam, but it's so multi-way.
That makes, makes me wanna jam even more.
Sometimes you gotta just hope and send it, you know?
I think, it's a good one. But if, uh-oh, trouble.
It's fine.
We're gonna solve the trouble.
We're good, we're gonna get there.
Bucket trees, this guy.
That dude, that dude's out of line.
He's a, he's a sprayer.
He's a squishy squirrel.
Get out of my game.
Look at you, ten deuce.
Alright, the disrespect resumes, I have chips again.
There you go, you get punished immediately, you get your nose put in it and.
Get your hand away from the cookie jar.
He says hello, Danny, no.
Keep going, we got a long way to go.
Danny might go here.
Welcome to the Galen Academy of How to Play the Button.
I was thinking to myself, I don't know, I don't know, I kinda like it, Danny, I kinda like.
Jamming this?
No.
Alright, cool.
I would call.
Check raise.
Hmm.
Is this a good one?
Uh, you know, I don't hate it, I don't hate this, I'm not a big fan of turning ace high into a bluff, to be honest, but.
This one, not the good ones, this one particularly.
No, I mean, yeah, your low aces are gonna be decent check raise candidates, uh, get uh, raise highs to fold.
Why do you hate?
We're not gonna pull from this range, cuz the board's seven, seven, nine, we're gonna pull from a lot of our flush draws, just fair interaction stuff, and he only has fifteen big blinds.
I mean, I kinda agree, like, I would love to do this with ace six.
I, I, I don't like the check raise with this combo.
It's a pure jam pre, it's actually a pure jam pre.
What's he doing with, with ace, you know, ace, jack off without the, you know, good flush suit, like?
Jam, wow.
At thirty-seven percent ICM, thirty-five big blind average. Versus seventeen big blind open, what was he, or was he nineteen big blind open?
Nope, seventeen.
If he's a, if he's an under the gun solver. Right?
Yeah, I mean, when you check raise here, like, the bottom of his range from under the gun is gonna interact with the nine and the seven with some straight equity. Uh, and then the top of his range is just gonna crush you.
It may be something that's still in my game, but I'm like, I don't know, like, I, I pull out some of the bluffy stuff when I face like under the gun, under the gun one. And then.
I mean, that's fine, but you're just gonna have enough straight interaction on this board to pull from that range that having to go to ace highs without a flush draw.
I was referring to like jamming it in pre, but.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, 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 no, I hear what you're saying.
There's a little bit of slivers, but really the backdoor seemed to be more like call.
I mean, it's a, it's a trashy backdoor, right?
You guys all have straight.
Hey, hey Louis, don't talk about my backdoor that way.
You're, all of, all of these raises are spade oriented or straight oriented?
Never make it as a stripper galen.
Yeah, 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 it's a way, it's always a thing, like, deeper stacked, we can raise some diamonds, when you're shallow, it's more just spades, right?
Yep, yep, hundred percent.
Will you fold? It would be a, a continuing.
Uh, I think we call, yeah. It's marginal.
Okay, this is good. Uh, this is not as good.
Stick cracking.
Oh my goodness, what have we done?
Gamma, oh.
What have we done?
I know. I would have called.
Oh, look at this, the six was coming, he was gonna scam us.
Maybe, yeah, if Mila folded, I would have called flop, I think, I was debating it.
I, uh, fold this sucks.
What do you call with, what's the worst suited ace?
Ace eight, ace nine.
Ace seven?
You say should be a little.
I think it's ace seven, I think it's ace seven.
Well, you guys holding is five suited here.
Yeah.
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 So ace seven, ace eight?
I wanna be flipping with more pairs, I think.
I think ace eight is my bottom.
Ace nine, I'm in it.
Uh, so like, the earlier they get, the earlier the open. The more respect I believe that they're gonna give it, so the tighter their jamming range is gonna be from GTO, so the tighter I will call as a response. So like, if the floor is ace eight, like, I kinda like what Dan's saying, like, I think ace nine's probably a good place to shoot.
One point for Nikolai.
That's a bad model, that one. It's assuming we're. Four bigs.
Ooh, this is, honestly, this is kind of close. Yeah, I'm gonna look at the hoods, I'm gonna look at the hoods and I'm gonna make a decision.
Feels like.
Like sevens is a fold, this, I think I'm calling.
Like, if I think, if I think fresh mango, for whatever reason, is on a little bit on the tighter side, I'm folding, but I'm. Yeah, dude.
You're step, you're stepping in front of the train here with bucket eight, you don't even know if they're gonna wake up. You're blocking the buttons, feels like you're just stepping in front of the train, no?
I don't, I don't think.
Don't block hijack bottom.
Hold on, hold on, what do you do with nines, Louis?
I think it's a three bet, so uh, the range is uh, from the solver is gonna be like a jack or ten minimum to call. Think nines, you have to go.
Nines are it, I mean, nines are in there, like, I don't think you get to fold dimes.
Yeah, I think sevens is a fold and nines is in, and eight is kinda like, this sucks.
Yeah, I'm pretty close to that, too.
So the guy who opened from the hijack, he has a jamming range here too.
Yeah, exactly, that is the one I just call h's like this sucks.
Yeah, so when he has a jamming range, you're up against the s- less of the stuff that you're gonna be good against, and you're more against the polarized part. But when you're up against two people who have the polarized part, I mean, it's gonna be pretty rough. Right, so fresh mango is.
That's a loose jam, right?
Nine's plus.
You supposed to flop.
Uh, you could, you could jam eight, it was mixing, it was most folds, and villain had King Jack off, which is way too wide of a jam.
Woo. On in?
Oh, cool, I think.
Yeah, jam, I like a jam.
Big bet.
Uh, you can see bet or check.
You need to bet big here.
I don't like a big bet.
He only has eighteen, why do you need to bet big?
I like spool.
Because what do you do with they say, pocket nine, pocket ten, pocket jack, blah, 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 doesn't matter, twenty.
This is a good big bet spot, this is, this is a good big bet spot, why would you guys not wanna big bet here?
He's thirteen, because he's twenty, we don't have big bets.
Not with this hand with the King of Hearts.
Actually, maybe you're right, maybe you're right, Peter, I, I keep missing the, I keep missing the twenty big blinds bit.
We, we do have big bets, but it's gonna be with ace eights and pocket nines, it's not gonna be with ace king.
I agree with Peter, especially the ace king with King of Hearts, we really wanna see a turn, and whatever we bet, bet big and get jams on, we have to fold.
Yeah.
We bet big, we get jammed on, we call off with the any art.
Yeah, the range mixes, looks good.
Yeah, we, with this hand, it's like. We don't want the SPR to be like super big, super low.
That's on the combo.
Not sizing up with the hearts, look at this, hearts is the one that doesn't size in.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, the King of Hearts wants to keep it small.
And then we do go polar still here.
Yeah, with ace eights and pocket jacks, sure, but.
Not this hand though.
Unfortunately, we get the.
I believe this is a call, am I wrong?
No, fold.
Probably not against, um, your average ACR opponent.
So here, here's the big problem, what if he has ace eight?
Maybe, though.
Right, like.
Right.
I think even if it's a fold.
Yeah, like, yes, it's losing chips pretty bad and only wants to call with the ace of hearts. And even the ace of hearts is a barbecue hand.
Ah, very interesting, so I'm calling too much here, cuz I was also calling the King of Hearts.
Yeah.
Oh, well, look at the queen, right?
We're at the point now where chips are very valuable, so I don't wanna.
This, this is very similar to what I'm doing right now. Any hard. In my hand, you just have to call off because people are, I think this is a spot where people might bluff too much, what do you guys think?
No.
No. It's hard to overbluff here, I guess they'll use too much hearts that are like supposed to call.
So, my first assumption is that people never have the right size here, they should be raising small, and they always go hard on, so that's the number one mistake they do. And I think they bluff too much, but I could be.
But the way to capitalize on that mistake is call with good hands.
You guys, no, you guys don't think people overbluff this spot?
I think they do, because I think it's the easiest spot for a wreck to remember from the big blind, when a flop comes like that. They just like, oh, this favors me, that's check raising, they probably do check raise too much.
And then check jam, which is not a thing on the sand, you know? And that's supposed to.
My issue, my issue is, is one, you're assuming they're bluffing too much, which we don't know, and two, even when they're bluffing, we're like flipping at best. So we're flipping for twenty big blinds, it's just a lot.
Yeah, it's. Well, I, I think this, this flip favor in, and I think maybe most of purple eye faces is gonna shove if you dare it.
Well, I, I think this, this flip favor in, and I think maybe most of purple, uh, faces is gonna shove if you dare it a pair with low stack. Or maybe he's flushed drawn on this board, maybe.
We're flipping, we're, we're flipping with a flush drawn, we're behind a pair.
If it's level three, I might call here, right? But.
You, you, he can have seven, five, uh, or nine, seven, or, and like this, and.
We're flipping with seven, five. And nine, seven.
You still have a lot of equity against you. No, but I get next point, even these bluffs have equity.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's just not worth it right now to take that variance. Um, okay, so here's the one where I mess up. I should probably just be like blasting flop, blasting turn, blasting river.
Definitely, yep.
The sizing on the flop is not good, right?
This is too small. Yeah, I looked this one up.
We can bet small here.
I think small's okay, but then if you do bet small, you've under after hand massively, then you have so many hands that wanna blast turn and you just wanna.
Yeah, I'm, I'm triple barreling here for sure.
Yeah.
This opponent is like, they're a good player and they know what they're doing, and I just, I, I don't know, something about it, like, I, I have a top ten stack right now, I just like.
Ooh.
Pitched out, it was like.
He's just gonna find the fold with like, I don't know, ace three or whatever.
He is small blind, not big blind. If that changes.
He's just got like a, an ace, I don't know.
And then I was considering bluff raising river, but I.
Yeah, I think it's good.
I think it's good.
Yeah, the heart.
You block, you block, you block his best aces with your hand as well. You block ace queen, you block ace jack.
Mm-hmm.
You have a heart.
Saber's gonna erase this hand for sure.
Yeah, you, you fucking, I mean, I, I would have been like, you shouldn't, I think you should have bet like eight bigs on the turn, but.
Can you look at river, Louis?
Yeah, it turns such a, it turns such a good card to barrel because you have the jack hearts as well, like, it's just such a, a hand that just wants to barrel.
Yeah, I agree. I even knew in game that like, that I was. Uh, like, I'm like, I should be bluffing here. That's one of my leaks.
One of my leaks, I do it too much.
You can't check. Uh, pure fold, huh? Just not believable enough.
Yeah, but.
Maybe my blockers aren't as good as we think.
And when you check the turn, you give up, but. Definitely a spot where you could have barrel.
I guess it's hard to turn it into a bluff on the turn when you're so capped. Cause you bet all your best hands, like your ace king, your ace queen. So like turn into a bluff, it's like, what value do you have? Or like, you probably don't even have fucking pocket fours, cause you shouldn't raise.
It's just the king high flush, right?
You have a few combos of flushes, not a lot.
It's your second pair of king here. Sometimes it's turned into a bluff facing the, the black death on the river, but I think it's because the king is like beating some things here, is it not? Yeah, it is. The king is beating like, uh, some. We're looking for this, though.
So is it a merge or is it a bluff or is it value?
Okay, well, if we raise it, let's see. We raise all in, oh, okay. So we're gonna try to get some weak aces to fold, I'm guessing.
Yeah. You're gonna have to fold some aces.
So we're using a king here when we have a heart to try to get aces to fold.
Ooh.
But you're not doing it with a random high. Okay, oh, well, you know? Thing is, you're doing it with the ten. But not with the jack. So. Good luck implementing that, you know?
It's probably supposed to be jamming his suited jacks by calling some of his suited tens.
Yeah.
Oh, cause his suited tens are gonna have straight interaction with the eighty-six. Right, ten, nine? I think like pre-flop, like thirty deep, like, if he has jack, king suited, he's supposed to jam, or. It's like that.
Right, I agree. Um. Yeah, so we just fold.
Yes, so Danny played it fine.
The passive round.
Where have our chips gone?
Uh. Blinds went up. Oh, there was a B V B pot that we missed, I guess. Maybe.
Well, probably, cause you get the big blind next.
Yeah. Does he have more chips now? Eh, not really. I don't know.
You get to jam this on the cutoff. I, I know you get to jam this on the bottom, but.
I would have been here, I would not jam.
Yeah, I think that's more, it's more.
Seems like a great jam.
Too deep to jam.
Nine, eleven, and sixteen, or seventeen?
Yeah, yeah. I just think maybe you can do it on the bottom, but not the cutoff, maybe, I don't know.
What were this time test finals? They were all short-staffed?
Nine, twelve, and like sixteen.
Sixteen's a little much. Yeah, it felt kinda close.
You can bet our checker. I like checking.
I can definitely.
Keeps getting worse.
Uh, that, that's like the worst ace side.
I think you need to call here, though.
Oh, it's a dry side pot, right?
Mainly.
Yeah, but it's a one big one.
I mean, I think you could exploitively fold, baby, yeah, like.
It's four in the man and two on the side. I thought it was close and okay.
If there wasn't an all-in player, I like the call.
Is this an all-in preflop?
No.
No. Queen does a limp fold.
You might jam off some kings, huh?
Most of them. Yeah, you're gonna be jamming down probably king three.
And then, not the queens.
This looks like it'll mix a limp or a min raise.
You'll jam like queen ten off, queen nine off, queen jack off, but it's just too far down. Just gonna limp fold.
In I C M, you can min raise.
Okay. So it's not all queens there. I thought this was a big block of, uh, let's go. But no.
It's pretty big.
Yeah, it's actually like a pure min raise, depending where we are. You start looking at final three table.
On the flop.
Yeah, with the diamond in hand.
Yeah, and the queen of clubs, like. It's just a good stab. We have a diamond, we have a club, we have a queen, fucking continues.
Sometimes I don't stab when I don't have a great plan for turns, but I feel like here, I, there's a lot of turns I can continue, so it's probably a good stab.
Yeah.
Diamonds, relation to like a jack, a nine.
Jack, nine, queen.
And ace even.
Part of it is, a lot of these guys will play fairly honestly, um, so I'm just gonna go for a delayed stab sometimes.
They're playing honestly, too. It makes better to just bet one big blind and they fold everything.
Fair, yeah.
Another spot where I think we're allowed to, uh, see but big, right?
It's own, yeah.
This is so annoying.
Do you check back on this turn? Hmm.
Nope.
Yes.
Really, but it's like a good, seems like a good bet.
I think this is a high-frequency check back.
I think so, though.
The flush completing for the big blind is good, especially with two high cards on board. He has all the low flushes here now. We have a gut shot on over, and, and, uh, the nut flush draw. We really don't wanna get like check jammed on. We also have a bit of showdown with our second highest unpaired hand.
Wants to bet a lot.
Yeah.
But checking is in there. You guys are definitely not wrong.
Yeah.
And then he loses an amazing price, so like, what are we supposed to do?
They have to call in this stuff.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
Now we have to fold.
He won the most possible chips from us. Congratulations.
This might be a little.
A little bumpy, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
Definitely two lines.
Got a gift. Lot of tens lately, huh? All right. Later it'll become the queens show.
Ooh.
I think I'm holding here.
Yeah.
Yeah, this sucks again.
I mean.
Oh.
Ace jack, wow.
That was five, we're both, we're out of line.
Did it ever, go back to pre, is it, do you ever find a jam pre?
No.
No.
Well, tell you what, with I C M, if you can dig those short stacks here, you got a suited king, kind of the wheel.
Or a squeeze even, like just six and a half.
Maybe, but I think like the, an ace five suited would be better here, or ace four suited.
I mean, when it goes phrase cool, it's usually very linear when you jam, though.
Yeah, that, I take back the jamming, but you.
We do have some.
Go like six and a half here.
Yeah, we do have some bluffs there with like suited kings and suited aces, I think.
Let me look at this one. If I can find one.
Big blind is all the unsuited stuff. King three, king four, king five, ace five, ace six, ace seven.
Kind of like this. Raise, call. Uh, nah, it just wants to call. But yeah, there's some squeeze jamming, like ace two suited, ace seven suited, ace five suited. A lot of the suited nines and, nines and tens. Yeah, king, king. King, queen through king nine, and a little king seven.
Also, it's very often king five, king six, king seven. The ace is gonna be like ace five to ace deuce, and then king five, king six, and seven.
Yeah, against two opponents, you gotta be a little more linear, a little more respectful.
Yeah.
All right, so what happened here? Bet one.
Check, check.
Check, check, check. Oh, he told.
He's saying he has an eight.
Oh, God.
I don't believe him. Or a jack. He can have a jack.
They're dependent, right? Against some call, against some fold. So.
He puffed you.
It's kind of a, not amazing bet with king, queen.
I agree.
No, he had his best king.
Yeah, exactly, like, it's, yeah, I'm not, I'm not in love with it. He can, his worst hands to bluff there, he's big blind, right?
So I was chip leader before that pot, and now I'm like mega chip leader. There's either three or four tables left. Um, so I'm just gonna turn up the gas and like open everything.
I mean, not, not everything, I hope.
Not everything. All right, so this is, he's like fifth in chips.
Oh, you got a flat here, surely.
I don't know, we, there's no boxing here.
Box, how do you wanna box him? With a jam or a, a three bet?
Put the saw.
Just a three bet, six and a half.
Boxing out of.
I feel like a, three bet's gonna box me.
Mister X.
Dude. Do you guys ever jam? I, I was thinking about a jam here. I honestly.
Is it crazy? Could be crazy, man.
I think it's crazy, bud.
Well, it's a cutoff.
Crazy.
From the cutoff, though, guys, from the cutoff, like, it's a wide range.
Yeah.
I mean, they're probably both top, top five stacks, though.
Yeah, this is first versus third in chips. Like, this is a three bet small.
Look at it, I don't know the answer.
Uh, I just flat, I, I just play post.
Nick, Louis. You're gonna punt I C M.
It's gonna be hard to find the right configuration. We need.
This is where you, you go all in here so wide, like, queen, six suited here.
Well, if somebody can, if Ken's around, he can, he could H R C it. I don't know if he is, though.
I think because you're facing it.
Final three tables, Louis.
Must be nap time already.
Yeah, final three tables. A twenty big blind average.
Just find like, they just, it needs to be like bigger stack in the big blind, and then like a late position big stack open.
Yeah.
And if you have to go to like eight players, do that.
Something like this, twenty-five, twenty-one?
No, that's not enough. That's not enough. You would need thirty, forty, I think.
We're not gonna find one, I don't think, cause like, I have like three X average stack, and he has like double average. That's just gonna be too hard to find.
Uh, all the.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, no, that's good. This, this is good. This is good. I don't think jamming's too crazy, to be honest.
Uh.
Okay, it's kinda crazy. Um.
Oh, look, just cool.
Just call.
So it, it's going more, well, we're doing that thing again, right? Like, it's three betting larger from the big blind. Like, as your chip average goes up, when you're in the big blind, you three bet more polar. So like.
And you can use absolute hands from the big blind.
And as, yeah, as you go more polar, you start using, as you go larger, you go more polar, so like, some of this middling stuff kinda goes out, and you start using like these really, really trash ones.
Yeah.
This is one of those spots where if you jam, and then you get cooled by like fucking queens, you just, you ca, you just feel sad about it for ages.
Yeah, I don't know. This would be kind of interesting to look at, like, if you, what happened if you only three bet to six or something?
It's good. Lewis has been hurt here. He refuses to jam.
A recheck raise, though. Oh, you pick, oh.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think it's bad.
Okay. The two, Lee.
The nine, four, no.
What are you doing, Danny?
Nah, man, this is it. This is it, Danny. Like, you, you, you need to put them in their place and let them know until they correct you. I, I think the only thing I would say to this is, that guy in the big blind, you have to call that off if he jams, which everyone's gonna know what you're doing if you have to showdown nine, four suited.
I think this is a crazy re, I mean, I mean, this is a crazy open, man. There's free rejam stacks.
No, no, but what happened was, they were all just folding every single hand.
Right, so you are exploiting.
The big blind every time.
You're exploiting the situation. You're exploiting the situation. This is good.
Those other short stacks, want that six big blind guy to bust, they're not gonna get out of line.
Right. And it's like, okay, like, who, who cares about M D F and all that, all that junk? If they jam over the top of you, they obviously have it.
Yeah, you fold.
So you just fold.
Yeah, 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 for sure.
Okay, so calling the big blind, I'm not as confident as you on it.
Yeah, you know what? He's just deep enough, you might be able to get away from it.
Well, I, I'll say this, okay, like, either situation sucks, because if you open here and you fold to a jam, they know you're full of it. If you open here and you call his jam, they see that you're full of it, so.
Yeah, but you see that you're a mad man.
But one way I can gain chips and knock out a player.
Yeah, it's like, pick, pick your poison.
Cause you do this, you show it down, next hand you get aces, you open, and there was like a jam, a rejam, and a call, and you got ace, so.
I mean, I mean, you, you have to cool, cause like, your, your cards are like certainly live unless they got over there, like a pair. When they jam.
I don't think you, uh, yeah, I don't know, man. I don't think you, you have to do anything. But. Um. That's, that, that would be my only critique here. If there was one spot that I wouldn't open out of line, it's probably into that guy.
Yeah.
Yeah, but this is the ideal spot, right? Because the shortest stack is in the big blind, and that makes everyone else that much tighter.
I don't know, man, like, I, maybe.
Is it me, or I don't like this situation?
It's, it's whatever, it's whatever you guys wanna do.
I think you can definitely grab an extra couple pips, like, I'm happy with opening nine, six suited, uh. There's probably point.
I mean, I think it's a tiny bit, I think it's a tiny bit wide, but I don't.
Wow, big blind fold. Big blind should be cooler a lot better, no? Or with I C M, should he be folded?
Is this the final table?
Oh, two tables.
Oh, that wasn't even the final table?
No, this, they, they just broke three tables. This is final fifteen, I think.
Hmm. I changed everything I said.
All right, sorry, I actually have till twelve thirty, cause the guy is on central time, so happy days.
All right, so.
All right, what were we asking? I can answer.
Is this final table?
Uh, no.
Can we put this guy in the box?
This must be final two.
Can we put this guy in the box?
We just saw like, uh, a very similar arrangement where I wanted to call with nines and started raising tens.
I mean, this is a cool.
Yeah.
But this is the second biggest stack at the table.
Yeah, but the last time the guy had thirty, thirty-four, now he's twenty-four, so I think you, you can loosen up, and the, the nicer is gonna go all in, or raise it more often.
Here's, here's the thing.
I think it can three bet.
I think it probably is a profitable jam, but I don't think it's the best way to play it. Um, we're like putting a ton of our stack at risk when he has a better pair, or wants to call ace king, and we lose. And, uh. Yeah, go ahead, Ken.
No, no.
Like, just the risk reward of jamming isn't there for me for the times we get coolerd. Um, I just don't wanna. Um, I just don't wanna, you know, we're like, we're still pretty close to chip lead, if not chip lead with two, three tables.
Honestly, Danny, I, I agree with, like, so something I've been trying to work into my game is like, you can often look at ranges and you can justify your plays by whatever a range says. Like, jamming, it may not be the wrong answer, but if they're making mistakes with parts of their range, why not play like a lower variance route? Like, do you really wanna put like your chip lead on the table versus ace, king there?
Right.
So you don't like jamming at all?
I, I think I like jamming less in this scenario.
It's a little too much.
Here, or are you more like?
I would, I don't know, I would probably just play call here, I think. If it's Adrian Mateos opening there, I'm gonna jam. Like, I need to run my equity versus ace, king.
Adrian Mateos plays eleven dollar tournaments on ICM.
Is there any consideration that nines blocked a lot of his open range? Does that make you wanna call more or not?
Yeah.
It would make me wanna jam less. So, yeah.
Final two table ICMs him?
Yeah, sure.
I mean, he should have less, he should have less nines. Like, he's raising it to the big stack, so he wants to be tight. Like, he, he shouldn't be raising king nine off here.
No.
No, king nine suited.
King nine suited, ace nine suited.
Yeah, I was talking to you, he's not gonna have all suit nines, ace nine off, probably, that's it.
Like, like, he should be super tight, raising it to big stack, big blind.
Yeah, he's twenty-five, we're forty, forty-five, and there's a bunch of small stacks at the table. He's low jack.
Well, I found one where he, if he were the button, then it like.
I'm done, jam, he's button, right?
Yeah, if you put him in hijack.
I think that's a good one.
Yeah, that's reasonable enough.
Like, what's it, what percent of hands is hijack raising here? Like, it should be. Twelve percent, yes, stupid. It's a tight range.
Yeah, this jamming here, too.
But nines are pretty much protecting all your.
Thought you could, you know, just really go hard on him.
We do? No, don't we not? Do we not?
And I could imagine more, I could imagine more. Yeah, if you move him back one spot to the low jack, it's probably gonna push it up too. It's probably gonna wanna jam tens and not nines.
That's something. So I feel like I would have wanted to jam tens and not nines.
The jam, the, the stacks are asymmetrical, it's gonna be a little bit different.
Yeah, what does he call? I mean, I guess it's just the coldest shit we fold out, you know?
Ace ten suited gets a call.
Well, yeah, we're not fifty bigs in the big blind here now.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to say.
Yeah.
Okay.
But maybe jam is, is the best.
Could be a good box, calling is probably fucking crazy as well.
I definitely considered it.
If you really wanna answer, you gotta look at HRC, it's the only way.
We'll have a couple HRC-able ones in a, in a little bit here.
No, no worries, I will buy it again.
To show me how I punt them.
No, 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 don't, don't spend any money, Louis. I got a, I got a plan.
Okay.
You like the raise?
I don't like the raise, actually.
Okay.
Yeah, I think on a rainbow board, you can give him the rope to double barrel here.
Just stacked up wise, I think it's kind of easy to get it in, right?
I thought tournament spotwise, it was a good, like, I didn't pressure him pre, but I'm still gonna wanna pressure him post quite a bit.
King, queen, overpairs.
So it's nice to have it sometimes when I'm trying to pressure him post.
I mean, I think you just, like, you've got the nuts, I think you just wanna keep in the buffs, and it's the dry ball.
I'm raising.
But if he has any gutter, he can't fold anyway.
Cause a clicky, your clicky bluffs are gonna get them to just fold everything that's air.
And some turns go check, check, and then we get like, we don't get to get it in anyway, and we get some awkward runouts and this and that, and.
I agree.
The later it is in the tournament, the less I prefer to trap.
Me too.
I mean, we do.
But if there's a hand that you're gonna trap, it's this one.
Yeah.
So, and like deuces here, makes it fifty-fifty. So probably cannot, you probably go it our way, but my guess is that nines, if, if deuces are mixing, nines are pure call when you have them.
I mean, deuces and nines are two completely different hearts, like, when, when you have deuces, they're more likely to hit the board, like, have a nine or one.
I, I don't, I don't.
Usually deuces are more vulnerable, and then here they, they play quite passively, right? But, in my mind, at this SPR, we don't raise much with very strong hands.
Sometimes we just get the gift, we have every chip in the tournament. And then we slowly give them all back. Yeah.
We went on the other table, still not final table, right?
Still final two.
We go against this guy?
I mean.
Yeah. Yeah, he's gonna be pretty resilient. Absolutely, yeah, I mean.
Fucking can be in.
We go here again?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Man, these people are, um, waiting for the nuts, huh?
It's probably what you, what you should do, though.
Not to this extent, like, yeah, you should tighten up, but like, I don't know, when we're only seeing like tens and ace, king, it's.
I mean, they should be jamming like, king, jack, king, ten.
Yeah, exactly, and if you're not seeing those hands, it tells you something.
Is this a good check back?
Yeah, you don't get better a size to fold.
I would bet here because we have spades.
Yeah, we have a spade and with like the super high CM pressure, um, I think it, we're incentivized to bet small at a high frequency.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause there's just so many marginal spots where you're like, you know, maybe a chippy V, he floats, you know, floats like king, jack of clubs or whatever, and he just is not floating there.
Spades definitely are betting more than anything else.
The ace of spades less than the nine.
You just wanted to fold his, his queen, jack, you know?
I think I thought this guy was one of the more competent ones and would defend relatively well, and I just didn't feel like getting check raised.
You just bet with a spade here, you double barrel on a spade on a straight card.
Yeah, it's true, you get check raised sometimes, but I think it's also just true that the slot bet is profitable, uh, in and of itself regardless of future action.
Raise.
Cause he's like medium stack too, he's just like, not interested in playing pots with you.
Yeah, this is a good raise.
This is a raise, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, easier is.
We're seeing the hand, so you know I raised it.
Yeah, fair. Yeah, jamming like nearly any two cards against that five big blind villain.
I'd had enough of this guy, alright, this guy was opening, like, every hand, he didn't care that I was on, on his left. And he was just opening up, trying to run the table.
I like the three bet, but, but three bet's small, man.
Enough, no, I didn't wanna get stuffed on, cuz this guy was the guy who was gonna stuff the ace, five suited if he has it. I said, you can't call.
I mean, he could just have an offsuit ping and fold, like ace, ace nine off.
Something I've noticed you do, Danny, is I, I feel like you let, uh, your, your ego get in the way sometimes. Like, if somebody shows up and does something that like rubs you the wrong way, you're gonna like, do a fifty big blind jam with like ace, eight or something into them.
Hold on, how bad can this be? Hold on, alright, I'm gonna look this up.
Actually, I mean, you got a king, and it's ICM, so it can't be too bad.
I'm not saying it's bad, I'm not saying it's bad, I'm just, I'm just saying, like, you let that stuff start taking priority sometimes, is what I'm saying.
I let him have plenty of opens before I put my foot down.
I mean, having a lay can't be that.
Put yourself in his shoes, what does he need to call up?
Like, he needs ace, queen, suit plus.
Queens plus.
Yeah, that's a great job. I mean, wouldn't you prefer king, six to king, eight? Cuz like, if he's opening wide, like eight's gonna be, offsuit eight's gonna be the bottom, if he's wide.
I don't mind bluffing here, but I think we should three bet.
I mean, I think, I think there's some better bluffs, I think like king, six, king, seven, king, five is better, but.
Wow, Lewis don't like this bluff.
If his call-off range is like queens plus an ace, king, it doesn't really matter what your combo is.
Yeah, that, that makes sense.
Right, and like, if they're, like, you see there's like three guys with like six chips.
Yeah, yeah, you can go. Am I just jam any, like, suited king, any suited ace in the model, to be honest?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought I could definitely get away with murder here.
Honestly, I think you probably could jam any suited ace, any suited king.
I think it's more like against a late position spot, maybe, but. You have to make the average chip stack way lower, Louis.
Yeah, we need HRC for it.
Yeah, cuz this is pretty extreme.
I think this is a really good spot to run, if someone can run, HRC.
Yeah, there's a, a three, a four, a five, like, let's go with twenty-one.
And if you say he's raising a lot as well, like, you're just gonna fold out so much of his range.
Calling for keppel, is the nap time, is it nap?
What, nah, what do you want?
Can you run this?
Uh, I mean, yeah, you guys all let you tilt me, run it, and then you're all gonna tell me to do this and do it that way, no, nah, 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 nah.
It's gonna be a great experience as usual.
What's the spot?
I sent you payouts.
I got ace, I got, I could just use a random ACR, I got some, a bunch of saves, I might even have a bush key, I don't know. But I can find like a ten K.
How's this thing in Spanish all of a sudden? Jesus Christ, what happened?
Obviously, Galen's got tables up.
I do.
This final two tables?
Oh my goodness, I just had a message from Ken.
That was a half hour ago.
Revealing is blocked, I'm not gonna say it. As soon as he came back, I knew it, I knew.
I posted in chat like ten minutes later.
What, what chat did you post it in?
This one.
Oh, are you saying?
I'm pretending, what did I say?
I'm pretending I'm not here.
Yeah, pretending I'm not here.
Oh, okay.
And he said I was taking my, first time he said I was taking an app.
Oh, okay.
The first call for HRC.
I'm sure it tilted him.
Oh, come on, come on, come on, Louis, why you gotta be so dramatic? Just say it.
For the nap, I'm sorry, Ken.
You say it like it's some sacred knowledge, like, oh, Ken's got a master plan, but I'm not gonna tell anyone.
Well, he's protecting me.
Protecting you from what? What you posted in general chat?
Well, that was much later, actually. I posted it afterwards. Cause he, I knew he wasn't gonna look, and I wanted, I wanted him to know that I was in fact here.
It's nice to know that Ken gets his naps during the study session and he doesn't fall asleep while he's playing.
So, how many players at the table? One, two, three, four, five, six?
Yes.
Alright, so who thinks it's a good jam?
How many tables are left? I mean, how many players are left total?
Twenty, well, fifteen.
With this type dip, with this type dip of everybody, uh, I don't think it's the, that bad.
I mean, I think the more I think about it, the more I like it.
So, why, why not just not all in three bet it, if you really wanna like mess with the guy? Like, why do you have to, why do you have to jam?
Yeah.
Actually, yeah, I don't know, I don't know how much, I don't know if it's gonna be mostly small three bets, or is it gonna be a lot of jams?
Cause I thought he was. You, alright, normally I would, I think it's a good point. For some reason, maybe good, maybe bad, maybe just like my two AM brain. Uh, I thought this player was the type who would find some four bet bluff jams.
Okay, I mean, that's a, that's an answer, that's a reasonable answer.
Now, whether that reasoning, like, whether I had a good reason to think that, I'm not sure, but that was.
But if you, if you three bet the guy, you're gonna go what, the six?
Five and a half?
Five and a half.
I, I think the reason that you wanna three bet here to a smaller size, cuz you also wanna three bet to a smaller size with the best part of your value. Aces and king.
Yeah.
Yeah, I will have some jamming with some of my range for sure, right?
Yalan, good, but, good jam or bad jam?
I'm on team three bet small, I don't wanna jam. I would make it like five point three, five point four, something like that.
A multiple, two point three, two point five, two point seven, what do you want?
Four point, four point eight, four point nine?
Yeah, I mean, you can make it four point nine if you wanted to.
Four big blinds.
Do we really want to put a bet, but we put everybody else all in with the, with the bet anyway? But do we want to play a, a pot of, that's gonna be, uh, the sixty percent six person of the stack, left stack, uh, that.
In position with the range.
Yes, 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 you do, yes, exactly, yes, you do.
I think it's very polar, I think you go five point two with aces through tens and with some like offsuit asex, some suited wheel asex, and then you just jam a shitload of the middling stuff.
Maybe.
Queen nine suited all in.
Maybe.
Ten suited all in.
Here's the thing with HRC, if I put in multiple three bet sizes, it's gonna split them all pretty evenly.
Oh, no, 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 Ken, Ken, no, why, yeah, just do one, just put one.
What size are we, have we landed on?
Can we do what I was doing game? Two point six X, AKA five point two big blinds?
I had two point five in there, so I'll go to two point six.
How do you split between two point five and two point six X strategies?
You don't.
Only a solver can. Right, like, what is it called, um? Use like infinite bet sizes?
Then, good jam or bad jam?
Uh, it's probably okay, um. Yeah.
Let's see, this guy's like fourth in chips.
That's the thing, it's just infinite ICM, like, okay, fine.
Three bet fold for me, by the way.
Yeah.
What?
Okay.
Never mind.
Yeah, I think three bet fold is a good alternative, I was gonna say, actually, on that, suppose he does have a good four bet bluffing game. We, um, you know, you see a lot in these spots that you three bet small with almost your entire continuing range in really high ICM spots. So then that means that we would like be in there with queens, we're in there with jacks, we're in there with ace, king, and when he rips into ace, five, we just snap. So, it's not terrible, and, yeah. A good four bet bluffing game, I mean, he's not four bet bluffing like twenty percent of hands, is he? Like, he's, you know, he still has to.
Uh, is there a cooler range here?
So, that's what I was gonna ask, is like, um.
No.
I don't wanna calling range.
I think because of the stacks behind, it makes zero sense to call, but if there were normal stacks behind, how would you play this spot?
I think there's a calling range, but.
I mean. That's what I was saying, I still think you often just like three bet tiny, your whole continuing range, like, almost no, no flooding.
A very ten calling range, like.
I think in that case, it makes a lot more sense to three bet small, cuz like, uh, you're not gonna, if there's three twenty big blind stacks behind, you're not gonna jam. You're, the jam range will be way narrower than in this scenario.
But I just give five or ten big blind more than to stick his, and, uh, the guy, uh, that, that I will have three bet more than the jam.
Uh, was it, how many people got paid in that roughly?
We got some answers in the chat, Louis, how many people got paid?
It's a big fill, it's a big fill, Ken, probably like two hundred.
One ninety-eight, two hundred, yeah, yeah.
Two hundred? Alright, well, I ran it with ninety-nine, that doesn't matter, right?
It's gonna matter not enough to change the inputs. I don't think it's gonna matter, no.
The thing is, though, final tables, when you cover, you get, like, this isn't a final table, but you get to flat a lot when you cover.
The button cutoff hijack opened, I'm just about ready.
Well, I don't think, I don't think with the stack depth.
Well, I don't think, I don't think with the stack depth.
Cut off.
If I flat and then like the small blind goes all in. And, and the opener calls. Then I have to call again and then like now we're three way with SPR one and it's a dry side pot and I guess it's not terrible.
I wanna change my answer.
Oh, yeah?
Of course I.
You think it's a good jam now?
Uh, it's looking that way.
Oh, baby.
I mean, I mean, the guy can only cool off with like kings and aces, no? So, share, how much of the range is actually not all in three betting?
Uh, a good amount.
Okay, well then it probably is, okay, if it's, if it's still picking jam, it probably is a good jam.
So, I'm gonna share screen, right? Where's the zoom at? Share screen. Direct message.
Oh, there is a small cooling range. Uh, okay, yeah, this is an interesting, this is an interesting range. It, it's like what I said, you're jamming your suited aces and suited kings a lot, just.
And then that's the thing, I was thinking like your, your small raise region needs to be, you know. Top of range and bottom of range stuff and it's just like hard to figure out where that line is, but you know.
Honestly, this looks like a pretty good, this looks like a pretty good output.
Small with that queen three suited, get folds.
I think guys just gotta fold so much is the problem. So you just kind of, you can't call and you have, you know, o- okay, I have this question, Ken. If you changed our stack to like third, no, 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 it's not about your inputs. It's not about your. Alright. If you made your stack like twenty six effective or something where. Like, if we lose chips, it's more impactful. I'd be curious to see how that would make. Would, uh, would affect our, our range. Becau- because, um, I think we might just have so many chips that you can actually just be super disrespectful here.
How many big lines do we have now?
You got like forty two or something.
How many do you wanna have?
Like, I wanna cover him by maybe five or six big blinds or something.
Percent of that.
Twenty five?
Yep. Yeah, that seems right. You, you wanna cover him just by not a lot.
What's wrong here? Four million. Like that?
Yeah, something like that, something like that looks good. Now, I would be, so this, this is gonna ramp up the risk premium on our end. I don't think we have a very high risk premium in the other one. And, but he does, so we're probably leaning jam. So now that chip stacks are closer, I wonder if we're gonna start using more of this not all in stabby size. This, uh, messing around size, you know?
That's what I would use, like I should adjust the three bet a little bit smaller.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it's not gonna be like a huge, huge difference, but I mean, you, you could if you really were that motivated.
No, so, I mean, alright, you could go like five, I guess.
I think it's good, though, I.
We only got him covered by one big.
That's fine, that's not too big of a deal.
Well, that will see the most, uh, extreme, right? It's good.
Yeah, so you can look up the bubble factors also, so like compare bubble factors and risk premiums, like I think it's in tools or something and you can see. Okay, cool. I think you showed it to me, obviously, you know. So like, see what, see like how drastic the bubble factors are. Or the risk premiums. Alright, so hijack versus cutoff, like. Two point, it's like twenty percent, so this is like ramped up the pressure.
On the, on the, yeah, the risk premium for the.
Yeah, yeah.
Twenty percent.
Yeah, so like, you, he can't, he can't call is what this says, but you can, yours is not very high in the cutoff, like you only have five percent here. Now that we kind of equalize the stacks a little bit, I don't think you're gonna be as jam happy.
So what's interesting about this is I would have thought the cutoff risk premium would be very, very similar to the hijack.
Well, well, that's why I wanted you to equalize the stacks a little bit, like if you, if you jam. King eight here and he wakes up with pocket kings and you lose, you still have like a pretty strong second or third place stack. So like the probability of like your bottom end being significantly impacted is not that much. Whereas the other scenario, if that same situation happens, you're basically wrecked. Like.
You're right, my, my mind, that's the hand we were looking at when we were close. I forgot, this is the first hand, we have them like two to one, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, okay, it makes sense now.
So my hypothesis here is we're not gonna be as jam crazy when we have an equalized risk premium.
Let's look at the second one. Yeah, it's very similar now, look at that.
Yeah, so we've equalized a little bit, like, pretty, he, he has a little bit less, we have a lot more. So now it'd be interesting to see what the strategy is. That's not the range. That's not the range, is it? Did I have it backwards? I guess I had it backwards. Maybe, maybe if we, well, I don't know, we're tweaking a lot of variables.
If we, if we three bet small, we just let him four bet jam everything and we can't call.
Right, right, right. Alright, so, yeah, do that.
I would like to give it a smaller three bet option now this time, cuz we are shallower.
You should do, you should do that. What is his four bet? What is his response versus three bet? Okay.
Like if we were to play a similar strategy as the one where we have more chips. And we had all those suited queens and all that offsuit king X and ace X, then. That would probably allow him to just go crazy with four betting.
What do you wanna see here, Galen? This is the second scenario with equal stacks, basically.
Yeah, just give him the, the not all in size, like the five and see like what his four bet range looks like. And then I just wanna see how like if that's like grounded in reality. Like, if he's jamming every suited king at us, it's probably not realistic. So this is. Uh, is that his four bet range?
Yeah, but I didn't run it all the way down, so it's gonna be some noise in here.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Going to another hand, it was, it ran about three quarters of the way, but there's some stuff, like this is probably gone.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Stuff is gonna go away here, but yeah.
Right, so.
That's still pretty wild.
Yeah, it is pretty wild, right? Like, I wonder, see, I don't know, this is, I, I would go down the rabbit hole, like I would clean this up and make this like. More realistic and actually see if it starts preferring a non all in sizing if we're not getting punished for, punished for not all in. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Like, I would probably remove, I would probably like make ace, jack, ace, queens call. And I would just be jamming like the very, very top end, like queens, kings, aces, ace, kings. I mean, yeah, if you implement this strategy, you're just gonna get torched. Well, yeah, yeah, and that's kind of the thing, like, it, it's gonna, I don't know if you're gonna find a guy in the, uh, the tens who's taking a second big blind. Or a second place stack and jamming a six suited in your face. For a four bet.
I was worried he might be the one, so I just had to jam it first.
I'll tell you, want me to go here?
Yeah, well, I mean.
We should move on.
Yeah, I mean, if we don't have a ton of time, like it, it, it's kind of getting in the weeds a little bit, but I would clean this up if you wanted to run it on the side, like queens. Just make queens, kings, aces and ace kings four bet jam and make like some of the middling regions call and just fold the polar ends.
We'll have, uh, one or two more op- opportunities for HRC.
Offsuit aces?
Yeah, dude, offsuit aces are just gonna be performing poorly, I would think, like ace ten's gone, ace queen is maybe a call. Something like that. And then you could just run that in the background to see how that lock strategy might affect our jamming strategy. I'm guessing if we're not getting punished. It's gonna make us not all in more, but, I don't know, we'll see.
Louis, you should, uh.
Yeah, okay, so.
Screen.
Yeah, see, that makes more sense, like i- it was already kind of popping that up.
Alright, so we got away with it.
We'll look when we come back, Alan.
Yeah, it doesn't matter, man, if you can move on, I was just, um. Just interesting to think about.
The right heuristic, you get, you get to just go clicky more, but you don't get punished. Cuz you generate a lot of fold equity with a clicky bet after not four betting, it's fantastic.
So, yeah, cool. And that is the power of HRC.
Yep, give it all back, fucking Cam bean again, can't get rid of him, alright. Suck me out, why not? Take some more.
Final table?
Final table.
My turn to scam. Still final two. Now final table, yeah, yeah.
You're trying to get scammed, you mean?
Oh, I'm behind again.
This is final two?
No, this is final table. Yeah, yeah, I was behind, let me refresh zoom again.
You supposed, ever supposed to raise this? Is it not too good to raise?
I would have raised, but it's limb jamming, so maybe that's why.
Your suited ones wants to limp jam, your offsuit ones wanna raise more.
Where do my chips go? What happened?
That, that is, that is seven, might be a bit close.
He goes so fast, it's all blurred to me.
Uh, should you value bet here? Like black bet?
You still lose to a ten.
Thought it was close.
I one big line on the flop, check call, check, check on the turn, do you not black bet here?
A block, you get called by ace I maybe, right?
Yeah.
I beat all the eights.
You do beat the eights.
I think with that.
Yeah, I might have missed a little value here.
Good spot for a two or three chip then.
You also lose less against the ten cuz the tens don't get a raise if you block.
Hmm, very aggressive.
And on that double flush draw board, you're gonna wanna have some bluffs, so.
He called it off with five high.
And he got there on the turn.
He was up and down.
Deserve to lose.
Yeah.
You pissed a style.
He's up and down and.
What do, what do we think about the jam? I thought it was just the best way to play it.
Are you doing it with value?
I don't know.
For sure, I mean, look, it's one point four X pot, it's nine high connected rainbow. I think I get to jam a lot of stuff.
It feels like I would check back here.
Why? You have an open ender.
Terrible, I, I think checking back is strictly worse than jamming in my mind.
You have a draw that is gonna struggle against a raise.
So put it all in, you don't get to face a raise if you're all in.
Well, I'd rather, I think when he has a raise, he has some bluffs, when you jam, you're usually gonna get called by stronger hands, right? So where if you just bet real small and he. Jams directly, he's gonna have some draws too, and you're gonna be ahead of some draws actually with the queen high, so. I think just bet small and call it off.
I, I think that's probably what I would do, Ken, personally, but.
I think i- if you wanna jam, you wanna jam the other three combos that have the backdoor flush here as well, for a little more equity.
Yeah, makes sense to.
Okay.
Bad ICM post slot.
Uh, I don't know, maybe that's what, king, king nine, big stack behind you.
Is it not a she bat there?
Being high board where you raised, it should be.
I think so, right? Oh, we get scammed.
Somehow only lose three chips in that pot.
Yeah, pretty crazy, right? Okay, then?
But this big stack's pretty passive.
Yeah, this guy was very straightforward. There was a hand where the, the best player and this guy got into a big clash. A big flip or something and this guy won, and I was very happy.
That's good.
Everyone left was no good.
It means you can open wider than theory cuz this guy's not playing back.
I started to do that a little more.
Like, so I didn't like the king nine open on the cutoff, but if this guy's just not playing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that was after me observing him, like, not, yeah, he would like just fold a lot and wasn't three betting me.
There he checked down jack high to you, right?
Yeah, alright, so here's the one, here's the first one, we can HRC.
Seems like they're a difficult spot to me.
I'm folding here. If it's difficult, just fold, no?
Fives on board life, I call fives and fold in fours, threes and twos, honestly.
But why? Why, why this guy is shoving his aces, uh, higher pocket on this board, you want to see some action?
So if I think he's jamming H two, H three, H four off, I wanna be ahead of some of those, right? With the fives, so I think five.
He's also like.
Right, it's like just good enough, don't you think?
I'm folding, I don't think it's good enough. Well, okay, it is the button, we're four handed. I, you, you have second place chips.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
But we're still, uh, we'll be third, right, yeah?
I don't know, honestly, it is close, I, it. I, I would fold, I'm calling like. Sixes is kind of like the hurt box for me.
Here's the thing, alright, let me, let me kind of walk through. The future game in my head a little bit, um. The way things have been going, I'm a little handcuffed by the big stack on my left, but he's not really playing back at me too much. So that mitigates that factor a little bit. But the short stacks can kind of jam into me with impunity if I'm not gonna call hands like this and slowly chip away at me. The big stack can decide to pressure me sometimes, like, I have a little bit of fear of just being ground down. And it becoming three of us all down in a pack with the chip leader over there.
So you're, 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 you're kind of talking on the other side of what you were talking about earlier, like in an earlier situation, final two tables, you're opening like nine, three suited from. Like, early middle position because they're just folding to you. Now you're worried that they're gonna abuse you by jamming too much.
Yeah, I wouldn't worry about getting ground down yet, honestly, you got a lot of chips though.
They had both been active. At this point.
So like.
And River Rat was just open ripping a ton of shit, or not, I don't know what he was jamming with, but he was jamming a lot.
The more I think about tomorrow, I like a fold, because I don't, we were on, it's like a flip, right? Like, if I'm like.
At best.
So, yeah, I think more I think about tomorrow, I like a fold.
But if we win, then we're co-chip leader. Like, one of us busts this guy and then we play heads up with the guy who's not that great.
Yeah, but I still think you can win chips as.
Alright, so like, what do you, what do you think's more impactful on your ICM value if you wanted just to estimate it? Do you think winning this pot is gonna be more beneficial for your ICM value as opposed to losing this pot being more detrimental?
Think it can be a lot.
That's.
Mental than positive, cuz you're.
That's the question.
Give me the hand, send it.
I actually think it's really close, which is part of why.
Do you think you're better, do you think you're better than these players? Do you think you study more? Do you think you have an edge over them?
That's why I changed my mind, I think it's close and probably a call, but then I'm like, I could probably just do a lot of my chips.
Right, so if you think like you're better and you think you have an edge over them, why would you like find the most edgy of calls in your mind? And like, like, defend the very floor, as opposed to finding like. A better spot, I guess, is my idea, where you're like not playing the guessing game in a way. I mean, yeah, this is gonna be the fault, almost certainly, if it is a call. Yes, yes, like, I, I don't think like you're, I don't think calling this is a massive punt. But I, I do think.
It could be a little bumpy.
It could. It's gonna be close, you know?
Because it's final table.
It's, it's, it's short stacked too, so it shouldn't be too terribly long.
So imagine if you could see this guy's hand and you could see that he had ten eight of hearts here.
Yeah, are you stoked?
What he had, and knowing that you're a slight favorite, do you want to make this call?
No.
No.
Right, so if.
If he showed me ten eight of hearts, I would fold.
Yeah, like if he's jamming, like, any two suited cards that are over cards to you. Like, I don't know that this is a great spot to take, right?
But I don't, I don't think that's where they're expanding. But I don't, I don't think that's where they're expanding. I don't know if he even has ten eight suited in range here, he might just like fold that. Uh, it wouldn't shock me at all, but I think he does have all the offsuit ace, wheel ace, I think he has fours, threes.
I, I, I hear what you're saying, he's gonna have, uh, he's gonna have more ace deuce offsuit added in range than he's gonna have ten eight suited. Is what you're saying, and like, pocket fives are gonna do better versus his wheels.
Yep.
If he's expanding there, but um.
I guess another thing is, I, I have four, how much of the top of the range is he jamming, right? Like, is this guy scared with kings and queens and he's just gonna jam, or is he gonna still two acts on like? If he's, if he's jamming like jacks, queens, kings, aces, ace candy.
That's a question, yeah, that's true, Ken, that's a question, right? Like, a more inexperienced player is just gonna take ace, king. Offsuit here and jam it. As opposed to having like, and you said he's jamming everything, jamming a ton, so I would assume that his like min raise range is shallow, probably isn't balanced. So, you know, like, I don't know. There, there's a lot of unknowns and like variables there, I, I think I would pass this up.
It might just be aces that are min raising, I wouldn't be surprised either.
So that's gonna take fives out of the equation, I think, if he's, if he's jamming queens, kings, uh, jacks, like, I think you just gotta fold.
That's the question.
You can give him to him.
So, alright, let's give him. That range.
So what do you call it, like sevens plus on the pair side?
Well, that's what I was saying, Louis, is like, I think sixes is like kind of miserable, because like. You need a certain amount of dominated hands to be jamming, so like deuces, threes, fours, fives, sixes. Like, um, the more of those that you're just ahead of, the more ace threes that you're seventy percent against. The, you know, the more beneficial.
And then what aces were like, ace ten O, ace nine O?
Ew, no, the offsuit ones are just trash, I feel like I'm gonna be very tight. I feel like ace jack is gonna be completely indifferent here on the offsuit side.
The thing is, he's probably showing like way worse aces, which makes the equity go way up, though. I guess you have to account for risk premium, which is probably fairly high.
When you shove from the bottom, it's because you, you want to shove your unplayable lens or. And mostly you're gonna face a king doos, king three, king four, ace two, ace three, ace four, pocket doos, like a three, pocket four, the. The, is higher value and is one, they're gonna, one keep you in the end to get value from you, so.
You're, you're making a bunch of assu- you're making a bunch of assumptions about a ten dollar player, though, like, you have just constructed your range in like a balanced way. From someone who has looked at ranges, someone who's studied poker a little bit, and you're speaking a lot of sense, but like, I, you know. Does that apply to this guy who's jamming everything from the button?
What I did here is, uh, the original range without modifying anything was. Raising not all ins, tens, jacks, queens. Uh, kings, I didn't, ace king was uh already doing this. And this was about the same, so this is what I changed, I gave him more pairs jamming, right? And, um, so. Uh, what are we?
Yeah, I mean.
So now, this is what we have, now, when, when I didn't do that, fives were point three six. And fours were like point two something, so fours were bottom, full frequency calling, not ten percent aces, but like over five percent of aces. This was just, just to tick under ten percent of aces.
Mm-hmm.
So this was the range basically, uh, unadjusted, and then. This is the, now the adjusted range.
Right, so like, i- it's borderline, it's, you know, like, like I said, I, I don't think it would be a huge punt if you made a call here. And like, if you have Steven Chidwick there jamming on the button, I'm gonna call fives because, you know, he's better than me. But like, the random ten dollar reg jamming relentlessly from the button. I don't know if I wanna take fives to the street versus ace, queen off or whatever. If I don't have to, if I can nickel and dime them in blind versus blind spots or wherever else they may be over folding.
You said ace jack.
A lot of people are for sure jamming these like tens, jacks, at least. Some people, whatever, queens, kings could go half and half, maybe, right? Like.
Yeah.
So, but they're not supposed to, if they're not supposed to, then we get to call pretty wide, you know?
You said ace jack is like more, ace jack's a slam dunk here. Ace jack though.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, I mean, like, so if you look at the offsuit side, it's just like dumpster compared to the suited side. Is, is the kind of the point I was trying to make.
Okay, I mean, like ace tens even like is more than ten percent of aces by, by far.
Yeah, king queen is the, the best example, I think.
Yeah.
Fold king queen off.
Yeah, king queen suited you, like, you know, it's, it's barely, like, it's not ten percent of aces, yeah.
Yeah, alright, so that's close.
I think you can fold king queen suited here.
Uh, if you think you have good future game without calling, you can fold, I don't know, I was a little impatient, you know, it's three in the morning.
I think the more, I think the more important thing is, is to consider what pairs they're jamming. Because it gets infinitely worse when they start jamming, it's infinitely worse when they start pure jamming these.
I think he had done a min raiser too, um, but he did seem to be jamming a lot.
To be honest, though, you're thinking super critically about the spot, like, you kind of have an understanding of what the RFI range looks like. And then you kind of have an understanding of where your opponent might be making mistakes and expansions. And you're like adjusting your range accordingly, which is like pretty high level thought process, so it's like. You know, as long as you have like something like that to justify why you did something, I think it's fine.
Cool, thank you.
Mm-hmm. I think it's good, alright, I mean.
I mean, I think this was a good model, as well, like, it seems realistic.
I think so too, and he just shows up with that.
Which makes complete sense.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, did you see how I made a six there? That's gonna come back again.
Why is this too? This is too.
Oh yeah, this is the second one, this is, I'm pretty sure I punted the, this one off here.
Yeah, definitely.
Versus a jam, oh, I wouldn't call this.
I thought in theory, his range is supposed to be really, really wide, and.
This is like a chippy V call, I think.
Yeah, 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 just like bottom of chippy V, like.
Hmm, I, I don't even think I'm calling chippy V, maybe king four suited chippy V, maybe.
Okay, I gotta run, but I would be, I would be curious what we do get to call there. Um, yeah, I gotta run, the last bid isn't super interesting.
Send me your file, just like screen, like send me the hand history of the final table, I could just upload all the hints in HRC and we can look at it whenever you want.
Okay.
Right, well, this feels bumpy.
Yeah, 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 I think it was bad.
Whoa, so you spin it up?
Yeah.
You, you spin, spin it up.
I, I seem to be able to do that sometimes.
Bunch of eights.
Ice.
The comeback.
Call it a comeback.
Can't win against this guy.
That's annoying.
One down.
Check, 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 check. Queen doos.
That was in the short stack too, right? Man, spicy.
Okay, yeah, I gotta hold. How many chops? Six, five, two, the. Seven, six, two, the. Limb, jam, fold. Jam, fold. Jam call, happy days. And then just one hand like this.
They have ace queen, twenty effective?
Yeah. Oh, king, jack, okay, this is wide, is it not? I think I'm just calling here.
I mean, is this the first time this guy's raised?
Blind for, blind versus blind, uh.
With his big sizing, it can't be that bad, cuz you're taking down so many blinds when you.
You can click it to six and a half.
Yeah, but that, like, that's just, like, his range might be so unbalanced, right?
I don't think, I, I don't think it's the craziest thing in the world. Yeah, I would, I would be more inclined to, I'd be more inclined to call, though, I think, myself.
Like, uh, especially, this is the first time this guy's been raising, it looks like, it's like. Maybe it's just like, oh, it's probably linear, right? Like, he's probably not raising king six O.
Yeah, well, yeah, we don't know, right?
What term minute was, uh, this one?
Okay, sixteen hundred people, right?
Eleven dollars.
I think it's more than that.
That was eighteen, eighteen hundred last night for eleven dollars per.
This was the fifteen K, it was a big one, um, he did send it to me, it was. Sixteen forty-three.
What do you, how much you get for this?
Sixteen thousand four hundred thirty dollars.
You got like, okay. He got like twenty eight hundred dollars for this.
Twenty seven fifty-two eighty-four. Uh, he got some hundred thirty dollars more than second.
Happy days, well, congrats, well played, thanks a lot for watching, everybody.